Good evening. Welcome to the Fairbanks, North Star Borough School District Regular School Meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, and we are starting at 6:00 PM. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Nanae people. Our mission is to provide an excellent, equitable education in a safe, supportive environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. The pledge of allegiance, if you will stand, will be led by Ms. Matheson tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Education Support Professional of the Month. Dusty Davis, an Alternative School Program Secretary, will be recognized as the ESP of the Month for April 2023. Lori Bean, Director of Alternative Schools and Programs, will make the presentation.
Excuse me, we need to take a roll.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm just like moving through my little agenda here. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Here.
Colonel Alvarado?
Here.
I don't see Colonel Suri. I'm going to say he's expected. Mr. Doran?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett is on Zoom?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Matheson?
Present.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
Okay, so I'll read that again. Education Support Staff Professional, the Education Support Staff Professional of the Month. Dusty Davis, Alternative Schools and Programs Secretary, will be recognized as the ESP of the Month for April 2023. Lori Bean, Director of Alternative Schools and Programs, will make the presentation.
Good evening. I would like to introduce you to Dusty Davis, who is our ESP Person of the Month, and she is my Person of the Year of the last couple of years. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about her and then let you know why I absolutely love her. Dusty's been with the district for about 19 years. She started her career in 2004 as a kitchen aide at West Valley High. Her goal at that point was to have a schedule that matched her children who were in elementary school. In 2005, she worked, started working a four-hour shift up at the kitchen, and then in 2006, she was promoted to Elementary Kitchen Manager at Joy Elementary. In 2007, after working with younger students, she realized that she really likes the high school students a whole lot more. So then she transferred over as the Kitchen Manager to Hutchinson High School. In 2010, she was offered the Attendance Activities Discipline Textbook Secretary in the front office of Hutch. And at that time, she started coaching cheer. She just wrapped up her 13th year of coaching cheer, which is to me amazing that she has put in 13 years of cheer. And she's always, always, always at football and basketball games, and now she coaches at Lathrop. So if you go to Lathrop's games, you'll see her on the sidelines. In 2015, she accepted a position of Activity Secretary at Lathrop, and she worked there for 13 years. Oh, for six years. What did I just say?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, ah, thirteen, six. It's September 2021. This is where I got to meet her. She wanted to take on a new opportunity, and she began working as the Program Secretary for Alternative Learning Programs. She was able to work with secondary students and expand what she already knew on education options. And she starts, started working with various departments, educators, professionals, and helping students across our district. So now she gets to focus on students all over the district rather than just one school. She was often, often asked why she chose to work for, at work at school and for the school district coaching. She thought she wanted to be a teacher when she was younger but didn't pursue that career path. However, working for the district has allowed her the opportunity to work with and support students in a variety of other ways. Dusty consistently goes above and beyond to assist all of the schools and programs that fall under alternative schools and programs. We've had some major changing, changes in e-learning this year, and those changes occurred a week before school started, and we were already registering kids. She didn't blink an eye. I told her, these are the things that we have to do, and these were major changes where we went from six e-learning teachers to one. And she had to put all those kids in classes across the district and enroll them all by hand. Again, did it without a blink and never, never, ever, ever complained, which I totally love. She's enrolled 600 students each semester in Apex with e-learning. She, she puts in our grades for them. She hand-enrolls them, unlocks tests, she trains our tutors, and she is also our technician to troubleshoot any of those problems that we have with Chromebooks and technology. When we started moving North Star College from 40 students up to 180, she's also doing that with me. She has made dozens and dozens of phone calls, contacted parents and students on making sure they have everything that they need for North Star College. She updates the website, and I, after I write her stuff down, I think, why do they need me? They have her. She continues to seek new processes and systems on how to improve what we're doing. She is constantly one step ahead or two steps ahead of me and a lot of other people within the district. She doesn't wait for anybody to give her the next task. She's constantly looking for something to do. Everybody needs a Dusty. She's proactive, and I'm telling you, if I'm thinking something, she's already thought about it, and she's got that sense about her. She goes out of her way to help students, and they are her number-one priority. Anytime that we have something, she always asks, what is this going to do for the students? How can we help them? And as our department has grown leaps and bounds, since I started this position and three years ago, I've added one person, and that's Dusty, where we've added hundreds of kids. She's truly my right-hand person, and we would not be so successful without her. I am thankful every day that I have her, and she continues to put up with me. She tells me I have too much coffee, and I'm talking too fast, and I have way too much Go-Go about me, and she'll say, go get the decaf. But I am happy that I get to share her with you all, and it's my pleasure to introduce you. Thank you. That's for you. I'm going to tell you a little story because Dusty will get this. You guys won't because she knows what a klutz I am. I was so careful with these things, and then I spilled them in my car, so some of them are a little dented.
She'll get that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do for our students. Thank you again. Next on our agenda, we would have the Black History Month Contest Winners, but on, there are some circumstances that happen. So we will recognize those contestant winners at our regular April 18th school board meeting. Next is the adoption of the agenda. We do this by a vote of consensus. Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next is our public comments on reports and agendas. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first. If time remains, anyone who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and their city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and chief adminis, school administrator comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may be needed to be gathered. Public comment, input ideas, and suggestions are welcome on salary, benefits, and other contractual items regarding the Education Support Staff Association, ESSA, and the Fairbanks Education Association, FEA, negotiations. Is there any public testimony at this time? So I have signed up Jeremiah Bayles. Bailey.
Hello, school board and Fairbanks community. I am Jeremiah Bales, B-A-Y-L-E-S, and I live in Fairbanks. I'm here to talk about preschool lunches. I am in eighth grade, and in my English class at Tannenah Middle School, in Ms. Hawkinson's class, we are working on Project Citizen. We researched different problems in our school, community, state, and our country, and then voted on one to research and fix. The problem my class chose was the fact that we do not have free school lunches anymore. On public radio, Savannah Hopkins on Marketplace shared that during COVID, because lunches were given out to Free For Everyone, this eliminated shame and the stigma of someone getting them for free. These past few weeks, we have done a lot of research and found out the benefits of everyone getting school lunches. Some of these benefits included children not going hungry, parents not having to worry about them. One alternative solution for, was for our school district to change to a four-day school week or getting help from federal programs. We thought about the four-day week because another class is researching how much we could save and that could possibly pay for lunch for everyone in the district. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, Jeremiah, if you hold just a second. Are there any questions from our board members? And thank you for your testimony. Ms. Matheson?
Can you repeat which school and which teacher assigned this?
It's Tannenah Middle School, and it's Ms. Hawkinson.
Tannenah, and Hawkinson. Where?
Sorry, you need it, Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
I'm really sorry. This isn't a question. I just wanted to say, I saw you at the middle school workshop, and I really appreciate you coming out and using your student voice to come and talk to us, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you again for your testimony. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to come forward and testify tonight? Come forward and give us your, state your first name, spell your last name, and place of residence. Thank you.
My name is Gail McBride, M-C-B-R-I-D-E, and I live in Fairbanks. And I'd like to make a few comments concerning parental rights. What stirred it was, of course, the, the governor's bill. But it's come to my attention that this school board has the authority to enact the policies that are in that Governor Dunleavy's parental rights bill. Many of the articles in publications across the state reference the lack of callers supporting the bill as proof that the people of Alaska do not support the bill and by default, support the schools usurping parental rights. This is not an accurate conclusion. If any of you believe that parents agree with restroom and locker rooms not separated by sex, you're wrong. Parents should not give permission for sex education? You're wrong. Teachers can withhold information about their child? You are wrong. The school can counsel, teach their child in gender issues without parental permission? You are wrong. The perceived lack of support due to lack of calls to a legislative meeting does not accurately represent a lack of support for the issues in the bill. I'm very aware of a silent majority in this community and across the nation who do not call in and make their voices public but are becoming more and more angry with the abuse of their children in the system. Many parents believe it is futile to come to meetings like these to speak to those in power or write letters. And year after year, the schools usurp more and more authority that is not theirs. This is creating a situation due to lack of responsiveness from school boards and lawmakers. May I finish my statement?
You can finish reading it.
Thank you. Parents, the lack of responsiveness from the school boards and lawmakers where a parent's only avenue is at the school board or classroom door. The school board should be in a posture of protecting first the students from overreaching activist agendas and protecting educators from engaging in these agendas that are enraging parents. As far back as 40 years ago, here in Alaska, legal counsel to a small private school, was that the issue? Pardon?
If you could just send us the rest of your testimony, you can email it to us or make copies available to Ms. Richardson, and it'll go to the entire board so that we can have the entire statement.
I can't do that. I, I would have liked to have made it public, but, but I certainly hope, my request is that you would consider these issues and take them on as a local school district regardless of what happens statewide. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your testimony. Mrs. Matheson has a question for clarification?
So I understand your concern. How do we encourage parents to to voice that?
I, that, that is a $64,000 question, and I'm not here to defend that people are not involved. This is a national decades-old problem that we have on not just schools but on all political levels, is the lack of involvement. And of course, where there's a vacuum, we all know what happens in a vacuum, and that's what's happened here. But, so I don't know that. I speak out where I can, but for decades, we have been culturally told that we can't speak about political or religious things. It's just not polite and all that, so people, and people are busy. People with, and many of you know, you have, you have children. They, they aren't going to sit on the phone and stuff, but it does not mean that they are not angry. I speak to many of them. And there is a volcano erupting, ready to erupt, and it's not necessary. It's not necessary. Natural law states that children belong to the parents, that parents have rights. And at the end of my thing, I hope you'll, you all will read it, that there's some quotes for, for a couple of them.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McBride.
I hope that you'll read them.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Seeing not, testimony is now closed. Next, we have our Borough Assembly Report, and Ms. Savannah Fletcher will provide the assembly report to the school board.
Thank you, President Sanderson, and good evening, school board members. My name is Savannah Fletcher, and I'm one of the assembly members from the Fairbanks, North Star Borough Assembly, and I just have a few updates for tonight. First, I just wanted to let everyone know about Noel Ween. In case you haven't heard, they're doing a big renovation project. And starting May 1st, Noel Ween will be closed until February of 2024. And I know that will impact a lot of students and families that use those resources, so please mark your calendars. And then fortunately, starting June 1st, we will be repurposing Joy Elementary to hold the young adult and children's library portions. So if folks still want to receive the programming, check out books, have a place like similar to the Berry Room, they can go to Joy Elementary. Unfortunately, during that period, there won't be a place for computer access or for adults to go sit and read books at Joy, but you can still make holds online through Noel Ween and go pick up your books at Noel Ween proper. We are hoping this will mean a lot more folks utilize North Pole's great library and really get a chance to explore there if they haven't been there yet. And then otherwise, I just wanted to check in about the budget. I've been listening to your meetings. I know you guys have been finalizing your budget to send to us. I just got the call today that those budget binders are at our mailboxes, so we can start reviewing those. Just wanted to give you a few dates so everyone has the calendar. April 13th is when we're going to be voting on the resolution that sets the minimum budget amount that we're guaranteeing for you all, just so there's some certainty there. So we haven't voted on it yet, but the resolution as it stands, Mayor Ward drafted it, it says it has $55,540,000. And then on April 20th is when we will be getting the budget presentation from the school board. I look forward to that. And then the 22nd is actually a Saturday starting at 9:00 AM. That's when we, as an assembly, will be meeting as the finance committee to go over your budget and take a vote on how much we're going to recommend. We vote on it as the final Borough Assembly. And then the last two dates I'll give, May 4th is a Thursday. That's when we'll be taking regular assembly meeting comments on our whole budget, but that includes the school budget portion. And then May 11th, also at 6:00 PM on a Thursday, is when we make the final budget vote. So lots of dates. Happy to go over them again if folks didn't catch them all.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Ms. Fletcher, for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, the next report is mine, so the president report. So this week, I had an opportunity to speak to our student government representatives, and they met at West Valley. And their theme of their conference was Clues to Success, and that's what I spoke to them on. So the board will start their policy review work. So what I'm going to ask for the board is that I get dates that they will be out of town and traveling throughout the town and traveling throughout the summer, and then we will calendar in those dates with some variances of how we're going to look at the, start to attack the policy portion of our work. And then I'm going to also send to the board a board link for the, it's the school board handbook link, and then we will take a, start to look at that to do a presentation at each of our regular school board meetings. And I am looking forward to getting past our budget and getting that work all completed, and then moving on toward graduation ceremonies that we're all signing up for across our district. And I'm looking forward to the students here in Alaska who will be graduating. I'm working on the June Nelson Memorial Scholarship Committee, so that's $1,500 scholarships that are awarded to 15 students across the state of Alaska. And I will be flying out for my granddaughter's graduation in May also. So that's the end of my report. And next is our Chief School Administrator's report. Ms. Mullin will provide her report, including updates on transportation. Ms. Mullin?
Thank you, President Sanderson. There's, there's not a whole lot of updates on transportation. I would just like to remind families though that our late bus process has changed, and so you will be notified through email. So please make sure that your email is up to date and correct because that's how the late bus notifications will be sent out. Next, I'd like to just mention again that the testing window is open for the statewide summative assessment, A.K. Star, and that will continue through the end of this month. This is an assessment that's actually required through state statute and is given to students in third grade through ninth grade in ELA, math and science. And it is an opportunity for the students in our district to kind of showcase what they know and are able to do. It's also just one indicator that is used to measure student success. There's multiple others, but it is one. In our district, most of our middle and high school students have, have taken the assessment at this point, there's still some wrapping up, and our elementary school students are just getting started. So we're, we're full swing into, to testing season. Next, I'd just like to, to talk a little bit about our Purple Star celebrations and April being the month of the military child. We are joining with other partners across the borough on Saturday, April 15th, at Pioneer Park in Centennial Center between 11:00 and 3:00 to have a day-in-the-life celebration for our military-connected families. There'll be fun activities to do, door prizes. So if on April 15th, between 11:00 and 3:00, you'd like to stop by Pioneer Park Centennial Center to, to be a part of that celebration, we encourage you to do that. Also, along those same lines, Lad Elementary has made application and is being considered as a Purple Star school. This is an award given by the Purple Star School Committee in Alaska, and it recognizes schools that show major commitment to students and families connected to national military. There's a celebration in Anchorage on April 14th where those Purple Star School announcements will be made. I'll be traveling down there along with our liaisons from our military installations. So we'll go down and be a part of that. This is, this is a three-year designation, and last year, our district had 11 schools recognized as Purple Star schools. And this year, with the possibility of adding Lad, that'll mean 12 of our schools have been recognized with this distinction. And then finally, I just want to, to say again, it's not too late to communicate with your legislators and advocate for public education funding. We do have our video available. You can share the link, talk about it with your friends and family. So we'll just continue that work until the finish line, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. Mr. Dorn, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mullin. On the late bus notifications, I know the issue has been a problem with the previous app and inside. Going forward to next year, is the intent that we'll be able to get back on email, text, you know, the, the typical things we've done in the past for notifying parents?
Yes, that is the intention, that we are working on fixing that application and actually have some fixes going on, but they won't happen before the end of this year. So yeah, the, the anticipation is that we'll go back to an app, an app process.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions, we're going to move on to our action item of unfinished business, we don't have any. So our next item would be new business item, and it's the Superintendent Employment Agreement Approval. At its special meeting on February the 18th, 2023, the board unanimously agreed, commenced deliberation and placed on the agenda the selection of Luke Minert, who has been offered a three-year employment agreement as superintendent for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, at a salary of $215,000. Need a motion?
Move to approve a three-year employment agreement for Luke Minert, Superintendent for the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District, effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026, at a salary of $215,000.
Second.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call further? Are there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Now, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Ms. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Ms. Richardson. Next, our, okay. Next on our agenda, Mr. Hornick, as you said over there as well. Next on our agenda is our lobbyist's report from John Ringstead. He's our district lobbyist, and he'll provide an overview of legislative session for us. Welcome, Mr. Ringstead.
Thank you, Madam President. So I was thinking about comments tonight, and it occurred to me that we're now, I think, on day 78 or 79 of the session, and I think we're just about exactly where we were just before Christmas and in the middle of January. We looked at it and said, everything we're hearing and still hearing is we, in all probability, will get an increase in education funding. We're somewhere in the parameters of $250,000 to $1,250,000. Now, the window is starting to narrow a little bit. There, there also have been discussions since 4th January, in December, I think, when we went and, and met with legislators, that there is talk of one-time funding as opposed to a statutory increase in BSA. That's still going on, and that's looking like it's a distinct possibility. So the, the big issue's money, I think, just to, I wouldn't say everybody, most of the legislators, I think, know and understanding that the districts need money pretty much across the state. So the, the fight then comes to how do we get it, they've been working through in committee the bills to, to address the BSA. House Education worked on that quite a bit. They started out with a bill that was for $1,200 increase to BSA. And a seven-member committee, they couldn't figure out how to get the votes to, to agree to any kind of a number. Finally, they, they realized that they had to move a bill through the process, so they got four votes out of the seven to say, okay, that number 800 is enough, let's move, or not 800, or 680 was enough to move, move a bill up to the Finance Committee. They did that. Now, the House typically addresses the operating budget and sometimes more broadly, all the, all the budgets moves the bill across to the Senate first. They've been going through that process. Finance Committee worked through all that. When they put the bill on the floor yesterday for the formal full, full four-member House on there, the, one of the Finance Co-Chairs made the First Amendment to that to increase the, the BSA expense or the education expense there to be equal to what the House Education Committee put, the $680 per BSA, but they're plugging in as one-time money. So that's kind of the next step. It's been a long two days for them on the floor, they recessed about 6 o'clock tonight, I think they're on Amendment 58 or something that they've been plowing through for two days. Their hope is to have the budget out of, out of the House and send it over to the Senate by the end of this week. The Senate then will, they've been kind of working through the budget too, they have their own plan. The Senate has been more unified in their position that we need to increase funding and do it at a significant level. They were pushing for more like $1,000 increase and doing it in the BSA. So, I mean, ultimately, we're, we're back to the same place where we are often this time of year. The Senate's going to pass their budget here in about two weeks. The House will hopefully have theirs done today, or not today, this week, and at that point, it's going to go into the Conference Committee between the House and the Senate, and as they wind to adjournment, they will come to an agreement. The other place that really has not changed at all in this discussion, the, the legislature typically gets a revenue forecast from the Department of Revenue in March, was not unexpected. I think a lot of people thought the fall forecast, last fall, was overly optimistic. So the forecast came out a week and a half, two weeks ago almost now, and basically said between the, the rest of the current fiscal year and for next year, the, we, we're going to have about 900 some million dollars less than we thought we were going to have. So what, it became very apparent to most of the legislators down there that, well, we don't have that much sitting there in reserve, they'll have to use some of the constitutional budget reserve fund, which takes a three-quarter vote to spend, not a simple majority. That becomes more difficult and quite frankly, more expensive for every vote you got to go get. But they also, the discussion brought clear focus on how big is the permanent fund dividend going to be? And that's been the other piece of the equation all along. The governor put into the budget a $3,900 dividend, and every $1,000 is about 650 or 675 million dollar expense for the state. So if you go to, there was some discussion, which had been going for several years now, if, if you have a 50, take the earnings of the permanent refund, a permanent fund, and you take 50% for dividends of 50%, then, okay, now all of a sudden, there's enough money to balance the budget, but not enough money to give anything extra education. So there, there's some talk of saying 75% goes into the, the state budget and 25% goes to dividends. The irony of that was, we had that discussion five years ago. So quite frankly, as a state, we have not made much progress on that, but that's, that's where our education funding really sits right now, saying, okay, we probably, in all probability, will get a significant increase, at least in one-time money. We don't know if we're going to get it in the BSA to change the statute and, and make it an ongoing commitment. And how much we get is clearly tied to what they can agree on as the level of permanent fund dividend for this fall. So that, that really is the trade-off the legislature now has to deal with in the next 40 days. And that's from the, I, I think, I think the last two weeks have brought that to a sharp focus, that now they're actually realizing, oh, it's going to be decision time soon. So on the money end, that's kind of where, where they're at. I think, I think we're, in terms of dollars increasing, if you put it in context, I think the, the House, when they put into their budget $680 per, per BSA, would suggest to me that we're probably going to get a significant amount. It won't be the 250, it'll probably be, be higher. I think at the other end, the highest number was this House's number at 1,250, that seems to be now off the table. So now we're somewhere probably between 400 and $1,000 or 400 and $800 in terms of increase. And I think Mr. DeGraw's numbers would suggest that somewhere in there, that gets most of what you're looking for. If you're on the lower end, it's a problem. If you're on the upper end, your, your, your budget looks a lot different. So that's where we're at going down the home stretch on, on money. Legislation, under what the legislature, they put subject summaries in, they're, under the education, the title of education, there's 47 bills, a lot of them are companions, duplicates here and there. Not a lot that are specific of interest to you. There's one that came up, was having a hearing the other day, requiring school districts to put their checkbook online. In the talking with Mr. DeGraw, it seems like all people have to do is ask for the, they send them to him. So it's kind of a unfunded mandate that really is redundant. So I don't know that that's going anywhere, but it's, it's out there. There's two bills in the House, two bills in the Senate relative to the, the lady that spoke earlier and public testimony about parents' rights. And I'm not a complete expert in this subject, but generally speaking, I think it's, it's parents opting in versus parents have to opt out, and I, I think your policy is parents can opt out. This requires parents have to opt in before the kids can go, is kind of the basic underlying theme of that one. The governor's put in a bill about recruiting teachers, giving bonuses, significantly different bonuses depending on where the teachers would teach in the state. Rural, people, rural teachers were getting significantly more than the large districts in town. Not been a lot of action on that yet. But I would have to look at and say, if I'm going to get a $15,000 bonus for teaching in the bush and a $5,000 bonus for teaching here, I might spend my last three years out there. I'm not sure how that helps us, but you know, I don't know that there's a lot of excitement behind those bills, but now if the House gets their budget out this week, they have time to work on some of these others. There's one that the Senate President put in that he seems interested in, that I think Mr. Dorn was familiar with, dealing with requiring civics education. And as much as I might think that that's a good idea, it's kind of like they're noodling in your bailiwick. The legislature coming down and telling you what you, what you shouldn't teach, should or shouldn't teach. So I think that that's been a consistent policy for most of the districts around the states and statehood. There are some bills floating around about defined benefits for retirement, and some of them, they kind of started out saying, we're talking about police and firefighters here. But that very quickly starts to broaden into school district employees and sometimes complete all public employees. It's, there have been a couple of hearings, they're kind of getting started. I don't see a huge groundswell of, of agreement on anything, but that, I I don't see a huge groundswell of, of agreement on anything, but that I think will continue to be worked on. And we need to pay attention and at least be aware of it. Just to find, you know, from what Mr. DeGraw has been telling me, that there's not, that's not really been a problem for you folks in the district here. And we're not sure that this isn't a solution that isn't addressing a problem for us. It may be in other areas of the state, but it may not be for us. So those are kind of the, the, most of the ones that I, that, I mean, there's a bunch of other ones, if you want to talk about, you know, hunting and fishing licenses for non-resident students. Probably not a high priority in your, in your prob, list of problems. So that's kind of where we are. If you've got some specific questions, I'll try and get you answers.
Ms. Maridi, then Mr. Dorn.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Ringstad. Do you get a sense from legislators that while one-time funds are appreciated, we cannot provide long-term solutions with one-time funds, such as raises, learning program support services?
When I, when I talk to them, I, I think they get that. But I think they're, the, the, the political problem is, we've got a block of people that really don't like the existing education structure. And I got a block of people that just want to throw money at the problem. And we can't get to the point of consensus of what else do we do? And like I said, in the, in the Education Committee on the House side, they tried several different levels of increase in the BSA. They couldn't get four votes out of seven to agree on any of them. And they finally talked, said, we, we have to move the bill whether we like it or not. We got to get through the process or the bill's dead. And so they just pick a number and say, let's get it out of here. And they still only got four votes. So I think they, I think they intellectually understand that, but politically, they don't know how to get there.
Thanks. I have another question if I may.
Go ahead, Ms. Maridi.
Thank you. In regards to the defined, the bill about the defined benefits, did you say that defined benefits, a defined benefit retirement, that that's not a problem in our district?
Well, it's, it's.
Did I misunderstand?
No, I, I guess maybe I didn't state that right. It's that, it, it's not, it's not, we're, we're able to generally hire and do better hiring recruiting than a lot of other districts in the state. So it's not the same type of a problem for our district, where some districts are having a really hard time trying to get, trying to get teachers. And my understanding is that we have had better success in Fairbanks than those other districts have. So it's a, it's a more critical problem elsewhere than here. And I guess it's up to you guys to say how critical it is. That's not my call.
Okay. I'm going to say it's very critical and, and a major deal. So, so with that, and Ms. Maridi asked part of the question I wanted, it was out of my list here, so I'm glad that's, we've done that one. That one-time funding does not do public, does public education at this time much good. We need longevity with it. How do we help to advocate and move the legislature, when you said politically, how do we make sure they know politically they need to invest in public education on a long-term basis, as well as addressing that recruitment and retention?
I think, I think that's, that's a good question, because in, in our last couple meetings, when a couple of you went down and meetings I've had with Mr. DeGraw and Ms. Moline and the, and legislators, just saying, we're past the point of one-time gets us through a little. I mean, we, we gotta move forward. And I, I think they, they sort of hear that, but it's not loud enough. I mean, I think, and as we talked to Ms. Moline, said, you know, it's time, you know, to get people to, to be addressing to them. We need to focus the messages a little more, rather than just saying, we need money, to going to, to where you're saying and saying, okay, if we can get messages saying, we can't just live month to month and provide good education any longer. We have to be able to plan, what are we going to do next year and the year after? And, and so it's a more focused and detailed message to them, saying, thanks, I appreciate the money, but you know, we, we can't provide good education if we don't know we're going to have it next year. Right? I mean, that's the bottom line. If you get to say, okay, if we try and implement more changes, move, move the needle forward and, and you pull the funding next year, well, then we didn't move the needle forward and you're defeating their own purpose. So I think that's part of the message that we've got to get more specific on to them on that. Now that we're getting down to saying that maybe one-time money is a real possibility here.
Follow-up.
Go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
So we've been testifying. In terms of getting that message going forward, it seems to be more than just testifying at the committee hearings, that now we really need to send it to the entire, make sure we're sending it to the entire legislature. And link to that, if you address that, are you seeing, I mean, my concern is the governor's bonus bill, the one-time funding thing are distractors of, and red herrings that are being tossed in to get away from that conversation? How do we?
Well, I don't know if, if, if they're intended to do that, but I, I think I agree with you that they are doing that. You know, people are, it, it gives them the ability to say, well, if we give them this thing to help, help recruit men over here, we've put more money into education. But that's, it's a cop-out. Quite frankly, it's a cop-out, and, but it gives them an excuse to do that. I don't, you know, I don't see any great groundswell of support for those bills either. And, and at some point, we have to get to, what is the underlying, how many dollars are we going to put into it and where does it go? If you're going to put it into a bunch of new programs, we've still got to get in the classroom and help them, you know? And, and I think that that's part of the concern and very distinctly different for different areas. You know, we got through with the REEDS Act last year, and that, that bill went from everything to very narrow. And still Senator Hoffman, when it got up to Senate Finance, this is absolutely nothing in this bill for rural Alaska. And I think that that's the problem. The one thing that helps everybody is the BSA money. And I think that's what we need to focus is this. Right now, we don't, we're past the point of saying, okay, just a little here and a little there, and, and we'll shore it up. We need to say, this is what we need to run our core business. And, and quite frankly, I think some of these other things are clearly distractions from the core, the, the real issue here. But I think now that the focus has gone to, to the finance committees and the money and the budgets, it, it's starting to get much more focused. And that's what the revenue projections helped us do. They realized that, yes, we want to give more money. I think what I heard, what they put in for the House budget yesterday was about $175 million cost to the state for that. I think the, the number we'd looked at earlier was about a 250 or 270 million dollar number that we had talked earlier to a, a cost to the state. So that's what we've got to look at and say, okay, if that's the money, where do we want to put it? Do we want it over here? Do we want it over there? Or do we just want it into the BSA? And that's, we've got to get them to focus on that. I think that's going to be, that's going to be the message. Mr. DeGraw and I are going to be down again next week. They're going to take a, a long weekend, you know, get the House budget done, go home for Easter, and then to come back for their final 30 days. And I think that's, we're trying to hit them with a focused, better focused message and get them to start looking at just, this is about money and it's about letting you guys run your business with the money instead of them doing it for you.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ringstad, for your presentation today. I'm so sorry if you already stated it, but what bill number was the civics bill that you were talking about?
SB 29.
SB 29. Thank you.
There, just to comment on that, I think there are a number of legislators that have been over the years and are frustrated with how little the people, I think broadly across the country, but people of Alaska, in their involvement and their really knowledge of how our government works. And I think that that bill, it kind of comes from that frustration. And trying to raise the profile of, we need to get more Alaskans and up to speed and involved in, in our government. So.
All right. Seeing additional. Mr. Dorn.
Okay. There you go. Perhaps you can clarify.
I'll give it a shot.
Or, or I will clarify. In SB 29, the civics one, some people say it does not require a, that they take the national citizenship exam. There are others that say it does. When you read it, and I know if you've had a chance to read it and notice where the word "or" is, it is that they have to take a half semester.
Or pass the test.
No. There's no "or" there.
There's no "or."
"Or" is between taking the test or getting a waiver from the test. Have you heard any other clarifications?
No. It's been quiet for the last two or three weeks on that bill.
Okay. If I might add another question.
Okay.
What do you hear, and I'm, I'm getting it from some of our interior delegation, we just got, an interest in unfunded mandates. There are several bills that are in there. The civics one, the mental health one, Alaska REEDS Act has unfunded mandates within it. There are a few others that are on there. Which of the ones that you might say are, are most important ones to, that may take traction, that we have to be?
You know, I mean, I, I was, I was thinking about it as I was going through the list. I see a lot of individual legislators' priorities that I want to push this and you want to push that, but I'm not seeing the cohesiveness coming together that the House majority, the Senate majority wants certain bills. And that's what they've got to get to in the next two weeks, if they're going to get a bill passed in the next four weeks. Right? And I'm just, it's going to be a short list of bills that pass this year, I think, because there are a lot of bills that haven't maybe moved out of one committee, much less go over through both bodies. So I think there was a lot of talk earlier that they're going to push this or they're going to push that, and, and I just, I just haven't seen it. But we'll see how fast they think they can move. The, the truth of matter is, on, on the House side, you know, they've got, I think it's 16 freshman people that have never seen the House Legislature adjourn, and don't know what it means to try and get a bill all the way through the process. And so they're struggling in, in terms of how they move bills out of their own committees they sit on and how to move it through the process. Not abnormal when you have that many new people, but we've done that before. But because of that, I don't see very many bills coming out at all on any subject. So we'll, we'll keep watching them and see what, what's now starts to move. You know, starting next week, the House gets done with the budget. Quite frankly, they have been overwhelmed with this budget thing. Now they can think about something else and, okay, what are you going to think about if you've got 30 days? Then they got to start focusing on, well, what's my top issue here? So, but we'll have to stay focused the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. I have one question through the President to the administration. Mr. Ringstad read up an important point in terms of what our message is on where the money goes. And I think, am I correct, that our legislative priorities is very clear that it is to the BSA and that that is our message, that it goes to the BSA?
Yeah. But I think, I think we need to have anybody else other than, you know, this group that might be sending messages down there, we need to have them saying the same thing. And then, you know, I think they've clearly, those of us that have gone down, we've, we've kind of given them that, you know? But as you say, how do you get from here to there? You broaden who's, who's speaking and, and make sure they're on the same subject or the same track here.
Ms. Moline, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of expand on that a little bit. And with our advocacy efforts and our video, which is a great tool, but to hone our message to our priorities. And those priorities being an increase, and we've been very clear, and it's very clear on our website, what our legislative priorities are. And that's our advocacy points and that every, that all of our advocates stay on point with our legislative priorities. I think that's what's going to be important at this point. We've brought it this far along and now it's time to, to fine-tune and pinpoint what we are saying, and that's an increase in the BSA. And we don't, our priorities haven't changed.
One more thing, if I may?
Go ahead, Ms. Ringstad.
We are hearing more and more discussion about it's time to write the basic foundation formula. And I, I was trying to think of this. I've seen it redone three or four times. Sometimes it's a major overhaul, sometimes it's just a cost of living adjustment. One of the, typically, it takes two to four years to, to do that process, just to get, we try and do a cost of living adjustment, and somebody's got to go out and spend some time and, and energy trying to figure out the difference, cost of living and, you know, knack, knack versus an anchorage. But, but there's a whole lot of that formula, and the, the truth is that most legislators don't know, mostly, hardly anybody understands the formula. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts and, and it's very difficult to figure out why. And most, we got a whole bunch of freshmen down there, they don't know why these things are in the formula or what they do or what it means. But they're, they're starting to have some discussions about, well, we want to do this and we want to do that. But there, there's several of them saying they want to rewrite the formula. Now, that obviously is not going to happen in the next 30 days, but I think they will be working on it. It's a lot easier said than done. And at some point, the leadership of the two bodies kind of have to decide, say, okay, who's going to take the point and run with this thing and try and make it happen? Because it's going to be, typically, you'll have somebody that will be their primary focus for two years as a term in the legislature, you know? Because it is a, a big workload to do that. But we need to remember that and think about it, because it, just, just adjustment of the cost of living factor, everybody, Anchorage is the base, and everybody else around the state has an adjustment, what's our cost of living versus Anchorage's? And, you know, if, if they say ours is 2%, 2% higher than Anchorage, and we think it's 4% higher than Anchorage, then that's a chunk of money for our district that we may or may not get. So some of it's, has a big difference, some of it is very specific to each individual district, but it can mean, you know, millions of dollars to you each year. So we need to kind of put that on the table to think that that process is coming.
Mr. DeGraw?
And just to build on what Mr. Ringstad just articulated, what he said was, and this is kind of a stark reality that we're facing, we're, we're going to continue messaging, we're going to laser-focus the message on a BSA increase. We've been, it's been laser-focused. But what Mr. Ringstad just said is, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there's a big enough group in the legislature that opposes right now a BSA increase. And for all intents and purposes, we're going to have to figure out what they need to get on board with a BSA increase. Many of them are talking about rewriting the formula. And if that's what they need, absent their numbers depleting significantly to where they don't have any, the votes left in the legislature, we're going to have to find out what they need and attempt to address those needs. That's our reality right now. And, and a, a lot of what's being talked about is the actual formula. Folks are saying, well, that's a, you know, that's misdirection and, you know, that's trying to, trying to change the, the narrative, but that's what, that's the reality of what we're facing right now. We're going to continue to advocate, continue to push, push, push constantly, but that's, that's, that's what we're facing. That's the reality of what we're facing.
One of the people that is saying that, just One of the people that is saying that just happens to be the co-chair of the House Education Committee, right? She said it while we were sitting there, right? We listened to her say it in a press, press conference. And so, you know, she, she wants to take it on. Quite frankly, I don't know how well she understands it or not, but yeah, and then there's several others that are kind of in that clique in there that I want, if I'm going to give more money, I want to see something change. And, you know, it's hard to get anywhere and maybe they think this is the way to make things change. So Mr. DeGraw is correct on that one.
All right. Mr. DeGraw, do you have?
Just one real quick follow-up. And that's not necessarily a bad thing for education funding in the state of Alaska. That's not necessarily a bad thing. So that, that could be a significant opportunity for us.
Mr. Dorn?
So I don't know whether this would be to Mr. Ringstead or Mr. DeGraw or somebody else who knows. My question is, are you saying that to review, possibly revise, the BSA formula would mean not getting an increase to the BSA? That that's in the way of our getting for the BSA or that is a piece that needs getting an increase to the BSA or that is something that's on the horizon will need to be addressed?
I'll take, I'll take a shot at that first. I think, is it in the way? Yes. There's a group that kind of is pushing that. They're not a majority of either body, much less both bodies at this point. But I think in this effort of we've got to get consensus on a number, you got to go somewhere, right? And it's, some of those people want to say, okay, if we're going to address it here over the next year, then I'm more willing to do something this year here. But if I'm not going to get any commitments to do something, then I'm not going to. So there is some of that there. I don't know at this point if there's enough votes there to stop a BSA increase. It might, at this point, it might be enough to make it a one-time increase.
And I would, I would just add to that. In listening to the floor session and how the conversation went and the fact that it was such an overwhelming vote for a one-time allocation.
Thirty-nine to one.
I think, Mr. Dorn, that, that it is getting in the way, the redo of the, the formula or just the whole funding, someone want to just wipe the table clean and start all over again. But that whole process is what is standing in the way of a BSA increase. That's what's causing some legislators, from what I could gather from the discussion, causing some of our legislators to be very hesitant or oppose a BSA because they're not opposed, from what I heard and what I could gather from the conversation, they're not opposed to education funding. They're opposed to the way that education system is working now and they want something to change. And so this was their way to get at funding education and yet changing the way that we do funding education. So that seems to be what the conversation was around on the floor around this vote and how they had, and how they were able to gain such overwhelming support for one-time funding.
And I think that's absolutely right. And the scarier problem to that, to me, is that, okay, if, they don't like the way the education is, is working right now, well, okay, what, what do you do about that? Does changing the formula change that? Well, unless they're going to get in and specifically tie money to certain programs, which would be an awful formula for you folks, they, this is a hard way to get to what they want. Quite frankly, what I'm hearing, kind of connecting the dots is they don't like it the way it is, but they don't know how to fix it. And all they've got is the money control. So they're going to grab it and shake that, they'll, maybe they get something. But the BSA part, that's, that part's going to go forward for the next couple of years. Or not the BSA, the foundation form, excuse me, will go forward the next couple of years with or without whatever they do this year. But they're trying to somehow tie it together so they get something for, for giving more money.
Okay, Mr. Dorn?
This is my last one. Thank you for that update and information that's very helpful as we advocate. And to the administration, I've been using the upward north of $50 million that we have cut in just recent years. And that's just for this district. And it would be good perhaps for us to really look at how many millions that we've cut in the recent years and then if other districts join in, how it really would perhaps help to inform the legislators that one time won't even bring us to parity unless we have some really long-term commitment to it. So just a thought.
That's part of what I think the groups that we've gone down have been saying, one, this one-time bump of $800 or whatever just gets us to last year. It doesn't get us. We've been focusing on that quite a bit, but, but it is an interesting concept and I don't know that I've, I know this number, how much we've cut cumulatively and what have the other districts done? Because that would be a staggering number probably.
Thank you, Mr. Ringstead, for your report to the board.
Thank you.
This time we have our district data dashboard overview. Dr. Ellis Ott, senior research analyst, will provide an overview of the district's data dash board. Welcome, Mr. Ott.
So while Dr. Ott's sitting up, I wanted to just let, let the board know and, and whoever's listening, that, that the purpose of this is to make sure that the board knows the enormous amount of information that is available to you and the public through our data dashboard. We have, we have a fabulous location there. It can be somewhat overwhelming at times, which is why I thought it might be good for Dr. Ott to kind of watch, walk us through some of the features that are available. And he's going to go into several different things, but one, our early warning system, which kind of is another way that we help students that we, that may be struggling. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Ott.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board. On record, this is Ellis Ott, the senior research analyst for the district. And as Karen Maline was pointing out, this information is publicly available. This is essentially my philosophy is complete transparency with public information and part of that is accessibility. How easy is it to get to or do they have to call one person who you've got to wait a week or two for them to respond back to you? And so my intention is that I want to empower our community, our school board members, our administrators, our staff to have access to this data very quickly. So on the district data dashboard, on the district's general website, on the right side, there's a little banner and there's a little tab with a person pointing at a graph and it says data dashboards. So you can click on that. So I'm just showing for the public how to get there. Okay, and there's, there's actually three different links. One is to American Community Survey, which is an outside entity from, information from the National Center for Education Statistics. It provides data on our community, the borough. There's a live dashboard with class size data. So, you know, often people make comments about how big the classes are and, you know, one teacher has this many and that many. You can go to that dashboard and find out exactly how many students each teacher has, each school has, what the average is at this moment in time. I think it updates based on the previous day. That was developed and maintained by Kevin Hennefeldt. The one that I work on and maintain is the district data dashboard. So I'm going to go there. So the first, the first dashboard that I developed and put up here was in 2016. So it's been about six or seven years and each year I try to put up a new dashboard or an update on some of the dashboards. And I have a list on, on my back wall of projects to work on. And I certainly listen to board meetings, I listen to administrators, the superintendent, assistant superintendents and staff across the district about what kind of information they're interested in to think about, what do I put on the top of the list as something to work on? And I always try to get at least one of them done each year. And I think I did a couple of them this year. So as Karen was mentioning, I'm going to focus on the dropout rate because that'll allow me to talk a little bit about the early warning system. There are 12 total dashboards. Another thing to point out, the, they're viewed very often. Here's some context. Before 2016, I was writing reports, right? Here's in the assessment report, here's the graduation report, things like that. And they were 100-page reports, right? And they get downloaded four or five times. And so my concern was, you know, how much do people know about this data and how much access do they have? And people might want to just string down to the actual data. And so this was an effort to kind of make it more accessible and that, I would argue, has been successful because our most popular dashboard, right at this time is the school climate survey, there's been 10,000 views for that survey alone, that dashboard alone. So this one's the dropout rate. Over 15 years of data here. And so it starts with 06, 07 and it's just showing the dropout rate for our secondary students, that's grade seven through 12. So what percent of students dropped out in that year? And it shows it for every year all the way up to the recent year. Now, we've had a kind of an anomaly in the last few years and that's around COVID. So like in 1920, we had a dropout rate of about 2.6%. So it looks like that's time to celebrate. We did really great, the dropout rate's really low, but what really happened was when we moved to remote learning very quickly in fourth quarter of that school year, it became difficult to track students. And so when that happened, I expressed concern. I said, you know, we're going to have a low dropout rate, be ready for that dropout rate to be different next year because we will, once we go back to in-person and you can more directly track if a, if a student is dropped out versus just absent, it'll be easier to track them and then our dropout rates will go up. And as you see, it went up those few years. So that's just something to think about when you look at it. Now I'll go into detail of the early warning system. I like to call it an advanced early warning system. That's simply because early warning system is a term used across the nation to talk about these models that are meant to predict if a student's going to drop out. Most early warning systems are very simple. There, does the kid have less than 90% attendance? Do they have at least one F? Do they have one suspension? And any one of those three will identify the student as at risk with the vast majority of these early warning systems. Well, mine is far more sophisticated than that. The simplest way to put it is, is that I look at all the data all at once, right? So I might take into account, yes, the attendance is 88%, let's say, but what if their GPA is 4.0? So what does that mean about the, the potential for dropout for that student? And I can actually analyze that for students. And because of that, the model that I have is substantially more accurate. I identify far less students as being at risk. And what I've done here is there's a little box in the upper right called choose comparison group. That's where you can take a particular characteristic and it'll show you patterns over time in a given year and over time as well, between different groups within a characteristic like dropout risk level. And the dropout risk levels, I summarized all that work with the statistics side of things to a simple low, medium and high risk, green, yellow and red, color coding for that risk. I would note that risk is changing for students almost all the time. So if a student is high risk in one moment in time, if their grades go up, if attendance goes up, that risk can change. And so that model actually is alive in our information system. So as students' grades improve, as students' attendance improve, the risk levels can change. But this is just showing the dropout rates for the high-risk group, the medium-risk group in yellow and the low-risk group in green. So like I said, the three things that I focused on was I don't want to identify a bunch of students because what happens when you do that is you make the net too big and you get a bunch of kids that you've identified as in need when they're really not in need. And, and so I want to have a laser focus and use all the data that's available and do the very basic thing that most people do intuitively. They, they would say to me, well, you just identified the kid because they had less than 90% attendance, but they got a 4.0 GPA. I mean, you would, with common sense, you'd say that, right? So statistical modeling is really doing what we kind of naturally understand. So identify not so many kids, but identify as many of those that actually end up dropout as possible. And I want a high accuracy. Accuracy is very simple. How often am I right out of the total things that I do? So when I say that they're high risk and they drop out and I'm right in that case, I say they're not high risk, they're either medium or low. And I'm right with that and I divide by the total. The accuracy is about 90% for this advanced early warning system. And I'll summarize real quick the characteristics that are used. The top two are attendance rate and grade point average, top two. Former dropout retention. Retention is so serious in terms of my analysis that I pretty much don't need any of the other data. If a student's been retained, they're considered high-risk status through this modeling. Credits in high school, behavior, the suspensions and test scores. But I would, I would point out that test scores are helpful a little bit, but not much. The most powerful predictors when it comes to predicting success for students is attendance rate and grade point average. That has to do with the fact that, you know, I'm measuring grade point average over several years, two years plus wherever we are now. So right now we're at two and a half years' worth as opposed to a test where a test is taken on a particular day, as well as the fact that a lot of these tests only give you four values. They give you achievement level one, two, three and four, where a GPA is going to have a much wider spectrum of values available. You could have a zero, a 0.5, a 0.7, et cetera. And I can evaluate that to a much more precise degree. So other things that we can do with these dashboards that I've set up is ultimately, when I built these, I'd been here almost 10 years at that point and I'd gotten data requests throughout the years and board members saying, hey, I'm really interested in such and such, can you go analyze that and send it my way? I just kind of looked at all the different kinds of requests that are coming through and tried to be, have it be just available right there. So I understand it can be a lot to look at at first because there's lots of options. But anyone can call me, I'm totally willing to talk to people about how to look at different things. There's a filter option at the bottom here. So that's if you're a specific school and you want to look at just your school or if you want to look at just your school or specific groups of students, you can do that. And I will open up one more because the, the board had brought this up in a recent work session and then I'll open up the questions. I'm opening up the graduation rate one. As I was saying, when I make updates, I made an update for this one. I, I've added the five-year graduation rate. So for example, in 21, 22, it says a 77.2% of students graduated. That's based on a four-year period. So what you do is you look at when did students enter ninth grade for the first time? Put it out four years and say that's their, you know, expected graduate, graduation point, time point in four years. While the five-year graduation rate, essentially in 21, 22, what I'm doing is I'm looking at those students who were in that cohort, who were, quotes, "expected to graduate in 2021", the previous year, you allow an extra. You allow an extra year. Maybe they transfer out, maybe we have new people come in that are part of that cohort. But we also look at, do they graduate in that fifth year? And as you can see, the graduation rate is six to seven percentage points higher. It's quite a bit higher graduation rate when we allow an additional year. I think I'll stop there and then go to questions and then the board can kind of direct things they'd like to look at.
Do you have questions for Dr. Ms. Smith?
Thank you so much, Dr. Ott. How, who can see the alert?
So the alert, I'm assuming the alert you're talking about is the early warning system, the low, medium and high risk. So that would be staff with privileges to see information on students. So that might be a principal and we might say to a principal, it would be a good idea to look at your list of low, medium and high-risk students. Because as was talked about with the Alaska REEDS Act, Alaska REEDS Act has a central component of what they call multi-tiered systems of support, response to intervention. And that's been brought up and talked about, the meaning behind that is really centralized around, here's what you do with your bulk body of students. And then we have this extra support type thing where we see that's the tier-two support and even more intense than that with tier-three support. And what I've essentially said to different programs, to principals, I've said, if you've got tier-two, tier-three type support, these at-risk levels can help informed potential students for those various supports. And the reason I'm doing that is, like I was saying, I'm trying to identify very few students. It's highly accurate. So it won't overwhelm you. I mean, that's the intent is, you know, if we're going to provide support and we're dealing with, as we were just talking about, limited budgets. So we might have a program that has 2,000 kids that they're trying to serve and they only have so many staff. It's a way to provide equity. It's a way to be efficient. Where I say to that program, think about what you do that's tier-one type work that's for all the kids in your program. Think about the type of work that's more tier-two type support, like tutoring. I would recommend you use this early warning system to inform that, you know. Board member Doran has said it before, data-informed decision-making. I don't think it should be data-driven because like I said, it's not perfect. It's 90% accurate, not 100%. And so it should inform decisions and not drive them. But it definitely should be used for thinking about it. So, yes.
Ms. Smith, you have a follow-up?
Yes, just to follow up with that. I had a parent ask me that question recently, actually. They said, do you know about the red dot system? And I said, no. I mean, I kind of got the feeling this is what it was about due to the other conversations we were having. And she was very concerned that every teacher of a student could see the red dot. And that she didn't want her child being treated as a red dot student by every teacher. And so I just wanted to be able to clearly, I guess, answer that for her. I said, we're going to talk to that person soon. So it's not just like in the grade book that this kid has a red dot. I'm just curious.
Right, essentially in our information system, there is a built underneath of it is like a privilege system of like who is allowed to see what? And it's not just open to everyone. And essentially we have to assess, where's the need to know, right? Who needs to know this information? Who really doesn't? And that's, in the technology department, we discuss it often about who has what privileges and who should and who should not have a certain privileges. So I would assure a parent that's expressing concern about it that we have that same concern and it's, it's definitely a thing that we work on to ensure that it's not just blanket to everyone.
Okay, you have a final follow-up, Ms. Smith?
I do have just one, I'm so sorry. So in the need to know, are the parents in the need to know? So like, can I see that if I sign into my kid's Power School that they are in the red or somehow in danger?
I believe currently, no. And it's certainly something that I've thought about adding to, you know, opening up for parents to be able to look at. And once I've prepared that, I want to prepare administration and staff and our department. And I'm totally fine with parents calling me and asking questions about it. And I do think soon might be a good idea. And we just haven't done that yet. And that's just a thing to consider is, do we have enough? You know, we're going to have to be ready to answer questions that parents have about what it means, what it doesn't mean, how might it be used? All of that kind of information we need to be prepared for when we, when we open that up, if that's the choice that we make as a district.
And I might add to that as a part, as a, the way that, the power of this tool is for those school administrators and teachers that have the conversation with the parents. That says, you know, we're a little concerned and here's what our concerns are. And, you know, just so you know, we're ready to support your child in this area. So, so that's how the information is conveyed now through personal conversations with parents or guardians. And just, it's a part of that larger multi-tiered systems of support because we think of it particularly in just reading. But the multi-tiered system of support can be supports in wherever that student, that child needs support. So, so that's the added layer to the power of this tool is the personal conversations with parents.
I'll just have a comment and then I'll take the order that you guys have. So before Dr. Ott was, I was working with, we had no dots. We had five criteria that the district asked us to go over and that was in our dropout prevention, graduation success program that the district had in place for about roughly four, almost five years. And there's a 40-page document that came out of that saying that the work we did was on point. At the end, when the program was closed, I think the graduation rate was 93%. So out of the criteria was attendance, it was discipline and some other things which I always cannot remember. But I do clearly remember before this system was put in place. And so after that information and Dr. Ott came on, we started using the dots. So as my classroom and being an Alaska Native tutor, how this was important for me to be able to help students to achieve their academic success was, I had my total number of students in this class. So I targeted or I supported strongly 63 of my student numbers that had those red dots because that helped me understand that there was something those students needed. Either they weren't proficient somewhere or they may have had some IUPs that maybe they weren't, their accommodations weren't being utilized. There was some sort of issue or foundation that these students needed. So having, being armed with that information gave me knowledge to be able to help support those students all the way across their academic time at the high school, from ninth grade through their graduating. It was a wonderful tool because I knew, I encouraged the ones who had the green dots because they didn't really need me. The ones who had the gold dots, they were, you know, in and out, but they were maintaining. But it was something about being able to clearly see that these students needed that extra support. And then when you join forces with migrant ed, Alaska Native tutors, your ELL tutors, I'm missing one other, when you join forces, or our DOD comes into play also. When you join with all of those staffers supporting students, then it's a total foundation of support built under those students. And so I found this, at first I was like, what are they doing? Why are we doing this? But once I got clued into it and could see how I could see the data, work with those students and see where I could build them up, network with teachers and staff and other support people in their life, it really helped support it. I think it's one of the strongest things that we do. That it, that everybody who works with that particular student can know that they, that extra support. And then as you see, the grades rising, the behavior changing, the attendance increasing, the self-esteem going higher, it all works. It's one of the best plans that I think we've put into effect. And I was just going to ask, maybe you could give us some more bonuses of how we can take this dashboard and make these legislators understand that we have legitimate data saying our success and what our students are doing. And with that, I'll stop. And I have Ms. Marotti and then I have Ms. Hardy.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Earlier you said that retention is an automatic high-risk designation. Is that retention at any grade or just retention in the secondary grades?
Any grade.
And so if they were retained in third grade, for example, due to the Reading Act?
Yes.
And then that puts them automatically at high risk for non-graduating. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
And it's a few, so to follow on to Erin, because that was exactly my question, but follow on to that. So you say that's automatic high-risk, does that travel with the student for their entire career then?
That's a great question. So I remember the principal meeting where it was either I was following up or that question came up and principals were relieved to hear where I said, so when I did the analysis and I had 10 years of data, right? I looked at how much data do I use, right? Do I look back, if I've got a 10th grader, do I look back at what happened in kindergarten? If I have a 12th grader, how far back do I go? And essentially what was the most reliable was the last two years. So if a student is in first or second grade, the retention might have an impact on the risk level. But there is a possibility of improvement such that they can shift into low risk based on attendance and grades, et cetera, in the following years. So with that being said, that, what that means is that the retention is certainly a risk immediately. And there's a possibility that it can shift into low risk depending upon behavior of the student through the attendance and the grades, et cetera.
Okay, so that's awesome. It's dynamic and changes with the students, especially, I myself was retained in first grade but did not have a problem graduating. So things can change. The other questions, back to the red dot, because I'm not exactly sure that it was made clear and as a teacher who had that system and I found it very valuable, it is still in Power School as, okay, so it is a red dot in Power School. Every teacher that puts in grades, correct me if I'm wrong, for a student is able to see it and also special education teachers who might not be putting in grades but would need to know. But not like if I wanted to check in on somebody who is not my student, I can view their Power School, but I cannot view their dot status. Is that correct? Okay, so who you are privy to. And I will speak to that like Ms. Sanderson did. It was extremely valuable for me as a teacher. It's a signal above the noise for me to say, oh, there are things going on in this kiddo's life that I need to pay extra attention to and make sure that I give them wraparound support and that they are able to be successful in my classroom. And sometimes they might be acing my classroom but struggling, especially when I was like at Hutchison in a different class. And it gives me the opportunity, because it is based on GPA and other things, to say, hey, what's going on? You know, how are you doing? And just know that I'm there and add extra support. I wouldn't say that I know of any teachers that use it as a punitive and call people red dot kids. It's a signal above the noise to know that this is a kid who has been identified as a risk for dropout. May I ask my other questions?
You certainly may.
Okay, and this one is probably more for the administration because you do not handle the Power School district dashboard, correct? You said?
I guess you have to do your question.
We've talked about this via email and I know Ms. Maline, I've talked to you about it as well. So I'm wondering where we've ended up. The target class sizes that are listed on our district dashboard, and I heard that the current ones that are published are what are published in our budget book from last year, but that we used CARE money even though in the budget book I looked and it does say this other number. It's very confusing. So for the listening audience, you know, if you look at the target dashboard, it lists our target PTRs as 25 for K2, 26 for four through six, 29 for seven through eight and 32 for nine through 12. But with the CARES money, our established PTRs are 25, 25, 27 and 30 respectively. So I'm just wondering why we're still sticking to those higher targeted even though CARES money is all the same big pot. We, that is our established PTRs.
Which graph are you referring to, Ms. Hardy?
You have to go, and it might be easier for, it's your target, it looks like this and it's not something Mr. Ott manages. It is a different person. And then these green lines, and when you click on a dot, it says target class size. And those currently say those higher PTR numbers.
Thank you.
So that's my question. I want the listening public to be aware that that's a concern and I'm still not exactly sure I've got a satisfactory answer.
Mr. Dukora?
Yeah, so that's simply an update we just need to make to that dashboard. The district is currently staffing to the 25, 27 and 30 that we've maintained with CARES and we just simply need to make an update to that dashboard.
Okay. And then another one on that same dashboard. And I brought this up actually before I was even on the board. We're averaging in smaller class sizes for usually self-contained sped classrooms into those numbers and we have a statistician here. I would like to know how that affects the way things look and if that is best practice.
So this is definitely a challenging one where for many, many years, when I first started here, we had a class size report, just like I was saying. Can't remember the number of pages, but certainly it was quite a few. And very, very arduous to create. And we had to go through with a fine-tooth comb through all the details that you're talking about. Was it a self-contained classroom? And it wasn't something that you can just have a field that tells you that. You have to kind of intuitively figure it out. You look at the number of students, you look at the characteristics of the students and you'd have to literally manually pull out classes because of that same issue that you're talking about of, when I'm talking about a class size average, which classes are included, which classes aren't, is an important piece of that. You know, and the same on the other side, orchestra, PE, the big classes, right? That can throw your average off as well. The average is going to be pulled off by smaller classes and larger classes. So I have thought about if I do a more, because for additional reasons beyond this, I've thought about, like I was saying, here's my list on my backboard of dashboards to create. Would I create a longitudinal one? Meaning over the last 10 years, if I can, look at class sizes, averages and whatnot. And, and I might think, I'd have to think about that. Is it, do I define it as a type of class, right? And how would I define that? I mean, and we're talking a month or two of project work for me to do that. Not only to collect all the data files, but to really, really dig into the weeds of that kind of thing to think about. And typically what I might do is I simply have a filtering availability in something of, is this class included or not? And I might set it at a default where it's sort of like me recommending, this is what I recommend you do. But then allowing people to look in and say, well, I want to see how big the orchestra is and I want to see how big the PE class is and whatnot and have that be available. and I wanna see how big the PE class is and whatnot," and have that be available. So that's certainly a project I thought about doing. Especially since, you know, when we're talking about impacts of funding, right? You know, Karen and I were working on something for Colonel Suri, you know, essentially talking points. You know, and some of those take analysis, right? One thing I did find, I looked at our target class sizes over the last 10, 10 or so years, I think back to 2013. And the target class sizes have increased by 20%. One thing that I found that was quite interesting was that the federal standard for Head Start is that you have either two teachers or one teacher and an aide. And you cannot have more than 20 students in that room. You don't get funding for Head Start if you do that. And I thought it was an important point to say, our target class size is above that maximum, right? So we're not, we're not even meeting the federal standard if we tried to get Head Start. Granted, that's for pre-K. Pre-K might have lower class size, so I'll add that caveat. I think that's important things to talk about. Because if we want achievement to go up, I think the legislature needs to think about, what class sizes do we need? What's a beneficial class size? And essentially, do we have a system set up in such a way so that our boards have the flexibility to do that? Because I found it very interesting personally. Legislators talking about essentially micromanaging boards, saying, you know, we wanna, we wanna have control over what decisions are being made. And I personally, in my own beliefs, think that's the purpose of this board, is to make the decisions on how the funds are spent. And the very same things that state legislators are saying, you say during your budget. And your highest priorities are class sizes. So I think there's a disconnect there of not understanding that that's exactly what boards are doing. And unfortunately, the way that it's set up right now, you're not able to not touch the class size at all. And that's where we're at. And, you know, so that'd be an example of a talking point. Talk about our changes in class sizes, because those have certainly gone up. And what would be an optimal class size? There are actually some states where state legislatures actually define class sizes, right? And then thinking about, how are you gonna fund that? So anyway.
You got a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. And just an observation, if her class size is not updated, but we're three-quarters through, way through the year, that perhaps we could get that updated quickly. So when we look at it, we've, we've got the current information. Mr. Ott, could you go back to the one screen that shows all your, all your charts on the dashboard?
Yeah.
That one. Thank you for all the work that has gone into this. And I know it's been years. And I know it's, as each one was developed over its time. And I just wanna preface this in that I know that we will be as a board in May getting into more details about measures of student progress, achievement, and success. So I don't wanna get into that depth tonight with my question. But this sits with the conversation we've had tonight. The observation that people look at public education and say that we are not doing well. If I'm a legislator, or somebody in the community, and I look at these charts, and I say, "Well, gee, how's our district doing?" And I look at them, and three in particular would jump out at me. The Alaska Star statewide assessment. The one that's down a little bit lower, the PEAKS, which we had for several years. And then we also have the district assessment. If I look at the, our district-wide assessment, which is primarily maps, measures of academic progress, I would look and say, you know, we're close to that 50% mark. If I look at the PEAKS, we're overall about the 40% mark. And I look at the Alaska Star, we're about 30% mark for proficiency. So I might conclude, oh, we're getting worse as we go along. Why should I invest? Could you give us a view of looking at these, what I can draw, what I need to be careful about? And maybe a context of where that does reflect where we're at? Or where it doesn't, how it doesn't reflect that?
So I'll kind of give you a quick, if I can, elevator speech about assessment, which is my expertise. Probably one of the higher expertises in the state. The research field in assessment has two major areas of scoring processes. One is called criterion reference, which is just these achievement levels, right? Pass, fail, you're at level 1, 2, 3, 4. Here's the different categories of your performance on this assessment. And it's underlying some standards that it's referring to and some claims you make about each of those scoring levels. The second is norm reference scoring. And that is, how are you performing relative to the larger group that took the assessment? And those give you two different types of information. And that was what was one major critical thing that our district continued to do when it comes to, like you were saying, there's a state assessment and a district assessment. So if someone said to me, "Why are you doing two different assessments? What's the purpose of that?" That's one major thing. The state's providing you these achievement levels, this criterion reference scoring, which can absolutely be difficult to interpret. Because as standards shift, the proportions in each of those levels change. And they in fact change dramatically with the new standards, which I think were adopted in, trying to remember, 2012? You know, and, and when that happened, I said to the board, "Be ready, our proportion of students meeting this will be different, even if our achievement is exactly the same." And it's because of, it's underlying the standards. And our own local assessment that we're doing with measures of academic progress, the purpose of that is, you know, we're getting progress monitoring because it's fall, winter, and spring, this assessment three times a year. They also had direct measurements of growth, which is very important, I would say, to measure both achievement and growth when assessing how things are going with students. And so when you see results for the measure of academic progress on providing sort of a summary of those percentile ranks, you know, one student takes it and it says, "You did better than 80% of other students," or "You did better than 30%." It's telling you something different than the state's assessment, which says, "You got proficient," or "You got advanced." And to help people kind of understand that, I actually did analysis. And yes. And this will help what you're talking about of like, these percentages look like they're different between Alaska Star and PEAKS. And go back to AMP before that, and the SBAs for about 10 years before that. Many have missed one. That the state will say, "These aren't comparable, and don't compare these directly," but I think people do it anyways, right? Because we're trying to assess how things are going. It's a reasonable thing to try and do, but it's very difficult to do with these achievement level-type results. For the Alaska Star, the advanced result, right? There's four of them, advanced, proficient, approaching proficient, and need support. Earlier I was talking about the importance of grade point average and how predictive that is. I'm not the only one making this statement. I believe the University of Chicago came up with a study, and they actually looked at, what's the predictive value of the grade point average in terms of college success? And they found it was more predictive than the ACT test scores. And I found pretty similar results. So that's why I'm showing grade point averages to help people understand, what does this assessment result even mean? So amongst students that got advanced, the average GPA was 3.8. Amongst proficient, the average GPA was 3.5. Okay, so we're still high, right? And this is meant to drive a point of where I would say, these achievement levels are high. Approaching proficient is the average, grade point average of students that got approaching proficient on that assessment was 3.2. 75% of the students that got approaching proficient on that assessment had at least a 3.0 GPA. And according to my Advanced Early Warning System, I might identify those students as low-risk, very likely. And need support was 2.7. So what I'm trying to get at is, what we need to understand is what these assessment scores really mean. And that's what I think is missing. Because I think what happens is, someone might talk about a percent of proficient and immediately go to thinking that we're talking about how many kids are literate. And legislators are saying this. They're saying, "Oh, there's this many kids don't know how to read." And where I watch the community meetings and I say to myself, "That's not what it's measuring. It's not measuring literacy. It's measuring whether or not a student meets the latest standards that were developed in 2012." Where the focus on those standards was career readiness, or college readiness. It's college and career readiness, but most of the focus was on college readiness and predicting that. Where I would say, students' educational paths could absolutely be different. I would be one of those students, you know, when I finished high school, I would say, and I don't think it's necessarily just a metric where one's lower or higher than the other, it's just different. I personally was not ready for a career, right? But I was ready for college. And all I'm pointing out is that it's not just how high the achievement is necessarily. It's just different educational paths that I would think we wanna support students in whatever direction they go, whether it's college or career or the military. We're a military community. We have a substantial proportion of students that are military-dependent. And I think it's absolutely reasonable for us students to enlist in the military. And so that's another option for students. And anyways, I'm getting a little too belabored of the point. But my point is, my concern is there's misinterpretation of these percent of students meeting certain achievement levels and thinking they're equating to literacy, and it's just not right. It's not correct at all. That's not how many students are literate. And we have far stronger, like I was saying, we have grade point averages. We have data that is far more predictive of how successful students are. I would argue our Advanced Early Warning System is gonna be substantially more accurate and useful for informing something like multi-tiered systems of support than a test score that might have an achievement level that's threshold is not fully understood. Anyways.
Mr. Dory?
Thank you. As a follow-up with that, when I, so also, when I look at these as a community member, in terms of understanding the background of what provides, and let's focus on these three slides. I have another question later, but we'll give somebody else a chance before I get back on the key. But understanding of what, how they inform teachers and principals for the, for their instruction. What information, you know, what should I understand behind that is helping teachers in each of these to understand instruction and helping kids continue to improve?
I would say, in general, my advice to teachers is evaluating a lot more than the single test score, right? Maybe even a history of test scores. How did they do on the Alaska Star? How did they do on the MAP assessment? What are their grades? I mean, I want to encourage teachers and empower teachers to say, "Your grading system has high predictive validity when it comes to the success for students later in life." And to not discount that. And part of the power of a grade point average, I think, is because, you know, if a student has several different classes, they might have a teacher that's a little bit easier, a teacher that's a little bit harder, and it kind of averages out. As well as, when it comes to a class, there's a lot more involved in getting the A, right? Over a long period of time versus taking an assessment really quickly. And that's just me conjecturing about why it is that the grade point averages tend to be more predictive of success for students and test scores. But for recommendations for teachers, I would say, look at all the data to inform your decision-making. And, you know, to take a bigger, take a bigger picture of the student. Because if you, if you look at a single assessment and it says, "Need support," and you look at your grades and you go, "My grades don't reflect this." I think teachers need to think about all the information they have in front of them to make a informed decision about supporting students.
Thank you. If you could put me back on the key?
I don't see any additional questions for anybody else.
Okay. I'll limit myself to two more questions tonight.
About one more.
Okay. The other achievement area that is often talked about, and people point at, and they say the NAEP scores. Could you help clarify for us and for the listening public how the NAEP fits into this? Is it key to our state standards? Do we get any information, again, to inform instruction? In May, I'll ask you about the statistical significance between the scores. But if you could answer those two things. What information do we actually get from it? And is it tied to our Alaska standards?
So the NAEP, for the public to understand that acronym, it's National Assessment of Educational Progress. That's administered by National Center for Education Statistics. Trying to remember the governing body. I think it's like National Governing Board. I can't remember the exact group name, but it's, they essentially define the standard underlying the NAEP that defines the basic, proficient. I think below basic is the lowest one, and advanced for students on that assessment. And it's given to every, well, it's intended to give to, provide results across the entire nation. But that would be very expensive to do. So what they do is this highly sophisticated process of sampling. Sampling meaning which kids take the assessment in a state to try and estimate the average performance of students in that state. So Alaska's part of that. And not all students take it, but it's, the intention is, we have a, kind of a good representation of our state, rural, urban, economically disadvantaged and not, certain demographics. Trying to make that as balanced as possible for our state. And no individual student gets results back on that assessment. There is a result for our state. There is no result for a single district in our state. So that's our challenge for our legislators. So they'll see the NAEP. The other restriction is it's only in a few grade levels, most predominantly grade four and grade eight. So it becomes very limited in that regard. The benefit is you can, you can compare states with one another. The benefit is you can, you can compare states with one another to that standard. And, you know, there, you can go to the site, anyone can look at it in the community, and look at what's the average performance of Alaska versus other states. And the concern has been that our state has a lower average than other states. And we're pretty low, close to the bottom. We being the whole state. And that's been my point, is that you don't have the measure for Fairbanks. We do. And as you said, we're close to the national average. So our result is actually different. But you can't use the NAEP to figure that out. You don't know it. So that's been a concern that's brought up. You know, as was stated by Mr. Grau and Mr. Ringstad, it's hard to assess, you know, when people are expressing concern about that, you know, how is that influencing their decisions? But I would say this, it has little, no relevance for our district in terms of informing how we're doing, because we simply don't know. We don't have the results from the NAEP for our district, which is another reason why we're going to have an assessment that has national percentile results, where we can say, hey, we've got something that does tell us how we're doing in comparison with the nation.
For clarification, that's the MAPs.
That's the Measure of Academic Progress, correct? Yes.
If I can, my last question. Okay. Could you go back to the span of charts?
Okay.
In terms of looking at these, and I know these are, last year, we, except for, I think, for the class size one, these aren't live ones. But when I look at attendance, graduation rate, dropout, you know, several of them, they take a dip. In some cases, the graph actually goes up. The dropout rate, for instance, is an upward, which is, we'd rather see a downward. Attendance is a downward, we'd rather see the upward. From your perspective, as you've been doing this for 10 years, we know we went through a couple of difficult years, the last few years, and getting students back into school, into the process, and, you know, there's a whole lot of different factors within that. So as you're seeing, and perhaps what you're seeing this year, some currency, it's going to take us a little bit to work our way, get accurate numbers on students being here. If we lost, you know, students are, went elsewhere, and we're still trying to track down, and I mean, that's a national issue that's happening. Could you just give a perspective on the trajectory as we come out of those difficult years, and where you see us kind of catching up to the before, you know, we had several years before, and now, as we get into it, if you want, a normalcy?
Yeah. And the problem is also that the measurement has been impacted too, right? So attendance is a good example. When we were in remote learning, it was a serious question of, well, how do you do attendance? You literally can't do it in a comparable way. And so attendance was handled where we said, you know, if students enrolled, they're attending during remote learning. And so the measure's fundamentally different then. And similarly with assessments, right? When we go back into in-person, and that was an option for students in, I believe, was it 2021, second semester, is 50/50, give or take. And students that were in remote learning were less likely to participate in the testing. And so I'm part of a technical advisory committee, and we had long discussions about, well, what do you do with that, when participation's very low in relation to that? So I would say, not only would I, would I think things will change with some, with some of this data, maybe much of it, in relation to coming out of that, but also for the measurement too, because a lot of things were very different. So my expectation is, yeah, watch this closely. As you, as you said, I already made a couple caveat comments about the last few years for dropout, you know? In a couple of years, we could get to a point where we could say, we're far enough out from there, we could more reliably talk about what, how things are going for our students.
Okay. Thank you very much for those explanations.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to our board and chief administrator comments. Ms. Malin, do you have anything?
I don't have anything for this evening.
Thank you. Colonel Alvarado?
No ma'am, thank you.
Colonel Sury? Rename him.
Trying to get on here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, hey, appreciate the presentation tonight. And as the one gentleman said, I know Ms. Malin is working with our team and several of staff to try to provide a short, one- to-two-page info paper that really kind of shows everything we talked about tonight, so I can inform our military senior leaders in Alaska what the situation is in terms of our, you know, how the budget has, has evolved over the last several years for the, for the district. So and then allow them, empower them to engage state officials. So I appreciate all the help and on that.
Right, thank you, sir. Ms. Dory?
I'd want to start off by saying, congratulations to Mr. Minor. I know we had an announcement in terms of our new superintendent. I think it was a good process. I think we have someone well-placed to help us in the years ahead. Some of those things that we've done here, so I'm really glad we were able to come to a contract agreement, and we're moving on. Also, I wanted to talk about the advocacy, again, for education. Our number-one focus is certainly on budget, and advocate for the public, since most of our conversation earlier was not broadcast by, okay, you would say they picked it up at seven o'clock, so it's kind of a repeat, for those who are listening, on the radio as opposed to the streaming. But really, the importance of that long-term investment, extended investment in public education, and recognizing that it is indeed tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars that we have cut and have not been able to replace anything on those. We continue to cut even in this year's budget. So the importance of having that investment at the BSA, and if they, our community rises to the occasion to really advocate for that, it is much appreciated. And I do want to say that it's been nice listening to some of the testimonies. They are representative, our community representative of, across the state, that we all need to really step that up. It was, Mr. Ringstad had emphasized in his report, not only for committees, but to the whole legislature, and, and to the governor who has the veto pen. So just want to put that request out there to our community, and appreciate their efforts on the behalf of our students.
Ms. Hardy?
I'd like to thank Schnook Charter School for letting me visit during their open house last week. I'd never been in the school, actually, and it's our oldest charter, so I really appreciated seeing that. And the quilts that their upper elementary makes, that they've been making since they started the school, are truly amazing. The upper elementary makes it for their graduating eighth graders. You haven't seen them, it's totally worth checking out. I was there while they were making it in the gym. And then the other one is a request that I would like to have the full board, or any interested members, attend the meeting on the 20th with the Borough Assembly. And I would like to make sure or confirm, because it wasn't in the district announcement, that Mr. Minor will be attending that meeting.
Oh, sorry, I didn't even hear you. Thank you, just thank you guys for understanding my absence tonight, and congratulations, Mr. Minor, on your contract. And I will see you guys at the next one. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. I just wanted to invite the community to our Diversity Committee meeting tomorrow at 5:30 here in this room. The center's Christine Schut will be presenting, and Ms. Holcraft, our student representative, is constructing an anti-bullying resolution, and hopefully will be reading that tomorrow.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. There is a Policy Committee meeting on April 10th at 5:30, so I would invite anyone interested to come to that. I also wanted to thank the high school student government, students. On, on Friday, I went to West Valley, because I heard that they were short many, many substitute teachers, so I, I set my morning aside to go over there and see if there was anything I could help with. But I did want to congratulate the staff at West Valley, that everything was very buttoned up over there, and they, and they really had no issues when I got there, so I joined in with the student government. And it was exciting to see the middle schoolers getting ready to really dive in and get involved in student government as high schools, and as high schoolers. So Ms. Sanderson was their special guest speaker, and she gave a very quality talk to the students that was motivating and empowering. So I appreciate that, Ms. Sanderson. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Marotti?
Thanks. I just wanted to repeat for the public, the dates that the Borough Assembly will be talking about the school district and the funding. We talk a lot about the state funding, which is a huge portion of our funding, but the Borough Assembly also is a large portion of our funding. So I think it's very important, and I know it's a lot to ask, but it's very important to focus on both. And so timed dates that you can testify to the assembly were announced earlier this evening, when the school district's budget will be on the Borough Assembly's agenda, and that is April 13th. Also, April 20th. April 22nd is a Finance Committee meeting, so that might just be a great time to show up and listen. And then May 4th, they'll be taking comment on the entire budget, including the school district's portion, and May 11th, they'll be making their final budget vote. They can provide up to, it's about $70 million this year. We're not asking for that much, but they can still provide up to that amount. So I encourage the community to please attend the assembly meetings if you can, provide testimony via in-person or via Zoom. Reach out to us if you need more information on how to do that. And advocate for education funding. It's not just the state, it's also the local Borough Assembly that funds us. Thanks.
Ms. Smith?
So like Ms. Sanderson and Mrs. Smith just said, there was that middle school workshop thing that just happened on Friday. That's something that Region 6 Student Council, that's everyone in our district plus Delta, puts on every year, and it's something I always look forward to. I never got to go in middle school, but when I went last year, I thought it was the coolest thing ever, even as a high schooler. I feel like I learned so much from my peers. We do, typically, we do like three workshops, we do a, how to outreach to your school, so like making posters, like reaching out to your fellow students. And we also do a public speaking workshop, which is my personal favorite. And then we do a parley pro workshop. And I had to do the parley pro workshop. I had to step in and do it because our Region 6 chair was gone for a soccer trip. And I think it went really well, and I really enjoyed seeing all the students interact, and I really, it's amazing to see all of those kids, those young leaders, use their voices to speak up and show that they want to make a difference. One of the kids was here, it was Jeremiah, he came and talked about the school lunches, and it was really cool to see him again. And then I also wanted to say, congratulations to all the solo ensemble kids. There was regionals on Tuesday last week for choir, and third, I want to say either Wednesday or Thursday, it was band and orchestra. I know a lot of kids made it in, and I'm really excited for state to see all, where everyone goes for that. I also wanted to reiterate, it's month of the military child, and we live in a district where it's heavily military children, and I just wanted to say, I love and appreciate all of them. I grew up around military kids. I am a military kid, and it's really heartbreaking to see them come and go, especially when you become like best friends with them, and then they just leave two, two years later. And it's kind of hard on everyone, and I just wanted to say, support each other. It's hard, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. For my close comments, I want to thank the district staff for your report, your support. The presentations that we had tonight arms us with a different set of tools, so I thank you for your work, and I thank the board for their work. And so we have, some of our legislators will be home. Max Representative Daubert and Senator Scott Kawasaki will be at the LOL Building, the Legislative Information Office, April 7th, 8th, and 9th. So it'd be a great time to go talk to them. Also, there is a pop-up free clinic. It's going to be at Ryan Middle School, April 22nd at 6:00 p.m., until April 23rd at 2:00 p.m. So it's a two-day event, and they have hundreds of Alaskas with free proactive healthcare and services. Just for our listening audience, again, every email that has come to me that has a budget concern, I've attached those documents, I call them my legislative tools, but I've added an additional tool, and that is the Borough Assembly Members Mailing List, that everybody, and I, I'm trying to communicate, that the board is advocating, the administration and our director's staff are, are advocating. Each member, as you send email concerns about budget cuts, I've had several conversations as to how we can do this, how we can do that, and I'm just letting people know that this is an all-out call to action for every concerned person in our district. When it comes to education, you have to lend your voice to the advocacy work that this board and this administration is doing. And so I've tried to be informative in answering those emails and adding those documents, so that each person, people can take them and add their voice to, to the work that we're doing at this time. With that, I have no further comments. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
We are now adjourned. Thank you for your work, board.